We're going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, December 4th, today. Before we get on to the public part of the meeting, we have some administrative session items. First, we're going to approve the minutes of Thursday, November 6th. Can I have a motion to approve?
Ryan moves.
Brian, and a second?
Second.
Joe, seconds. Any discussion on the minutes?
Whatsoever.
Okay, we can vote all in favor of the minutes for approval.
Aye.
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 Okay, everyone. Second is election of the officers. So do we have, we first will nominate the chair.
I will happily nominate for the chair.
Okay, so Brian nominates.
Say the name.
Christine Hogan, Chair.
And anybody else?
I'd like to second the nomination of Jane Second.
Jane Second.
Third.
And that's a third? Okay, that, we need a majority, so that's a majority, so I am the Chair.
Do we have to vote now?
Oh, now we vote.
We actually have to technically vote.
Okay, so we're going to vote.
Yes.
In favor, yes.
Joe?
No vote.
I'll vote in favor of myself.
Well, you can't, but that's okay.
You can, but that's okay.
Okay, well, okay.
We got you covered.
All right.
We figured you would.
The next election is for the office of the Secretary. I'd like to nominate Jane for Secretary.
I'll just name someone for the vice.
Sorry, Jane Nishbaum. Second?
I second.
Okay.
Brian, second.
So as we have a second, do we just vote then by majority? We don't need three nominations.
Right.
Okay, so now we're going to vote for Secretary.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. And Joe?
Yes.
Okay. So that makes Jane Nishbaum Secretary. Okay.
Yep.
Oh, now we're going to vote for the Vice Chair. Anyone want to nominate, anyone for Vice Chair?
I nominate Katie Grady.
Okay, I will second that nomination.
I will second as well.
Second, okay, we're going to go to a vote on Vice Chair for Katie O'Grady. Brian is a yes, I'm also a yes, Jane?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
He's a yes. Okay, so that makes that a majority.
Congratulations.
Katie Grady is the Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Okay, is that the end of our election of officers? Okay, that was magical.
No master arms for the zoning board of appeals.
The next thing we're going to go through from the administrative session is our, we're going to look at our dates for 2026. Everyone should have that in front of them or have looked at it already or, so can I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the dates as presented.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is April 16th the Thursday or the Friday?
Friday. No, sorry, it's Thursday.
It's the Thursday.
It's Thursday. I move that we adopt the dates on the calendar as presented.
Did you ask that because here it's April 15th, where? 2026, am I looking at it wrong?
That's the submit application.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Look at the actual one.
Okay. So we've all had a time, we've all seen these already. Okay, so is there any more discussion on these dates or questions?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
We have alternates, so if somebody cannot attend one of these meetings, we're fortunate we have alternates who could step in for us, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, we should take about to agree to this times for public meeting and submission dates. Okay. Katie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so these will be our dates for 2026.
Before we move on, could, our website is not as up to date as it should be, it's still showing 2024 meeting dates. Could we just make sure that these get put up appropriately on the website? There were no 2025 meeting dates on the website.
Should have been there, but I'll make sure that they are.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we are going to move on to the public portion of our meeting. So I'm going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for December 5th?
Today's the 4th.
Fourth, okay. So explain our process. First, when the matter is called, the applicant or his or her agent will present the case at this time. Originals of any petition should be given to the town, the Clerk Tara. Copies of the petition should then be distributed to the board members. After the applicant's presentation, all interested persons in favor of this application will come forward and speak. After those in favor have spoken, those in opposition will then revert. The applicant and his or her agent may then address the comments made by those in opposition. Second, this meeting is being recorded as required by state law. It's important that we're able to understand the recording. Therefore, only one person may speak at a time and anyone who speaks must come forward and speak clearly as our recording device is located in the ceiling. Always give name and address. We welcome the comments of all interested persons, but we must exercise discretion in making sure that your comments are on point and we reserve the right, if we feel your comments are off point, to restrict you. Third, applicants and interested persons may remain in attendance after the public hearing for the executive session to find out what was decided, or may call the zoning office tomorrow morning. Fourth, if the application for a waiver is granted, it is not valid if the notice is not recorded. The applicant must bring a check in the amount of $70 made out to the town of Fairfield to the zoning office on Wednesday or later following the meeting for a proper recording of notice of filing. Any waiver involving construction requires an ASB prior to an issuance of certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Okay, thank you. So we're going to start with, first application today was a continued docket of 287 South Benson Road, but that is a continued to January 8th, 2026. So we're going to move on to our general docket for today, and our first item is 31 Cambridge Street, map 130, parcel 92. Petition of Christopher and Madeline Anderson as a variance of the zoning regulations, section 3.4.1, to reduce the following setbacks: street line, rear line, sideline, and some of two sidelines from 30, 30.7, and 25, currently 29.5, 23, 9.4, and 20.1. Proposing 25.6, 10.6, 6.1, and 13.3, and section 5.3.1, to increase the lot coverage in floor area from 20% to 40%, currently 16.8 and 27.5, proposing 27.5 and 46.5. Permission to construct a one-story and second-floor addition with a front porch and a rear deck, premises A zone.
Thank you. We do have the petitions that we'd like to give handout, and again, I also, I have other material that I'm going to be referring to. There's copies, and I have the petitions. There should be a copy for each of you, it's what I'm going to be referring to as I speak.
And could you just identify?
Of course. I'm sorry, my name's Jennifer Tierney. I am CJ and Madeline's architect for the project. I live at 710 Rockridge Road here in Fairfield.
So you should now be in receipt of the petitions that the Andersons did receive from their neighbors.
All of the signatures on that petition live within 200 feet of their home, and every single neighbor who directly abuts their property to the side, to the rear, to the front, have signed their petition in support of their project.
I have to step outside.
Oh, that's okay.
I will listen for folks.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be sure to enunciate.
Just for the record, you'll be in attendance, you're just going to be there.
The Andersons live in existing Cape Cod on an existing non-conforming lot. Again, in their neighborhood, I can't say this with certainty, but just from driving around and looking on vision appraisal, it seems that, that seems to be the norm in their neighborhood. When you, if you flip through the packet, I handed out to each of you, you can see the image of the Andersons' home, of their existing Cape, and you can see images directly across the street. There is an expanded Cape, there's a Dutch colonial. Again, these two properties have signed their petition in support of their project. Again, going now to the next page, these homes are all, again, within 200 feet of the Andersons' property. You can see that each of these homes, again, visually, it seems that vast majority of them have been expanded. A lot of them are clearly non-conforming in terms of their proximity to the street line and to one another. And then on my next page, which I think is the more important page, I've done a blow up of the zoning calculations, and then you'll see an image of the proposed project on a survey. It's going to be the last page of the packet I handed you. So what I've tried to show here is I've created two graphics. Obviously, there's the proposed project and all of the calculations with all of the variance requests. Their lot is 5,893 square feet in a zone that should be 9,375 square feet. Their lot is only 62.8% of what should be a lot size in Zone A. So in the red rectangle that I have overlaid on the survey, that is the size of a lot if it were conforming to the minimum square. So they have two burdens on their lot. It is very much so undersized and it is irregularly shaped. It's a pie. The red rectangle represents to scale if a lot were to meet the minimum square. That red rectangle is 75 feet in width. If this lot were conforming by meeting the minimum square, but still undersized at 75%, so not quite as burdened as it is at 62, but if it were at 75%, the Andersons would only be here asking for two variances. One at 25.6 feet for their front setback, and then one at 26.5 from the required at 30 for their rear. If the lot were to size, it would, it's represented by the blue rectangle overlaid on their lot. That blue rectangle meets the minimum square at 75 feet, and it is 9,375 square feet. If their lot met the requirements for Zone A, we wouldn't be standing here today. They wouldn't be asking, or they wouldn't need a single variance, we wouldn't be here. So that, I think, I'm hoping that that represents the burden that their lot presents. We did try very much so with the design. You'll see that the minimum side setback, while it's not a minimum of seven, it is at 6.1. I think it's important to note that because of the pie shape, that 6.1-foot minimum that we're looking for is only a pinch point. Again, it's a pinch point because of the pie-shaped lot. The front of the house is triple that. So from the street, it's not as close to the side setbacks, only due to the pie and the fact that it doesn't meet the minimum square. Again, CJ and Madeline are here, they have one child, they're expecting their second. They happily went and talked to their neighbors, who all are, again, clearly in show of support of their project, and we're happy to answer any questions and hoping that you'll see in favor to approve their request.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Does the board have any questions for this applicant? No, Katie's, no, Brian, Jane, do you have a question?
I don't really have questions, I'll have comments once we start talking.
Sure, sure, okay. Okay, Joe, do you have any questions?
How long have you, how long have you owned the property?
Since May of 2022.
That's it.
Okay. No more questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this application? Do we have anyone online?
We have one.
Oh, so I don't even have to say that today.
There's no.
Okay, so I don't have anyone here to speak for it. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this application? Okay, seeing none here, we know we're going to close this application. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next application, number two, on our general docket, which is 5151 Park Avenue. Map 13, petition of Sacred Heart University for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 3.3.1, to increase the maximum allowable height from 40 feet, proposing 42.8, permission to construct an elevator shaft and canopy over press box, premises R3 zone.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carmelo Cicero, Associate Vice President of Capital Projects at Sacred Heart University. As mentioned, we're here seeking approval for a height variance of a couple ancillary structures at our campus football field. So we got a presentation for everybody just to kind of walk through. Do you mind, we'll go through the first slide?
No.
Yours. I think we're missing, there you go, perfect. So this is an aerial map of our 5151 Park Ave main campus, off of Park Avenue and Jefferson Street. The Park Ave main entrance is on the far right, and where you see the yellow star, that's depicting the location of the project site for the elevator tower, as well as the new press box and canopy. Again, just for reference points, it's, you know, furthest point west to the main entrance as possible, abutting the nearest property, which is the golf course. Second slide. So there on the right, you'll see an aerial view facing north of the existing conditions of campus field. The far right is our existing home side bleachers. The far left is the proposed new visiting side bleachers, as well as press box location and elevator tower. On the north side of the end zone is our Bobby Valentine Rec Center, and then not shown on this view, but far south is a Verizon cell tower, just to give a sense of what currently exists around campus field. On the bottom left is a view facing east, which is our home site, very similar to what we're looking to construct on the visiting side. So it's a set of higher bleachers roughly at 30 feet elevation at the highest point, with a press box mounted on top. The two photos on the top left show two conditions. One condition is when the campus is not being, or the campus field is not being utilized for football in or lacrosse, doesn't require, you know, program and filming purposes. When we are filming, especially in the northeast with inclement weather, we do need to put a temporary canopy to just protect, you know, the folks that are up in the press box for camera purposes, and also to protect the expensive equipment that's required for filming purposes. So again, that scenario is exactly what we want to do on the visiting side, so visiting side bleachers with a press box, similar in height, and then constructing that press box with a weatherproof canopy that doesn't require to be taken down at the end of every season. So next slide, please. Again, different views. You can see on the bottom left, facing west, is the proposed location of the press box, as well as elevator tower, and you can see directly behind it, abutting it, is a pretty deep grove of trees that are in excess of 60 to 70 feet. So the visual impacts, the two structures that were here in front of you, we're certainly well below that. Top left corner is an architectural rendering of the final proposed conditions, with the visiting side bleachers, the press box mounted top center, and then the elevator tower there in red. All right, next. These are the three structures that I noted at the beginning of the presentation, so the Bobby Valentine Rec Center, that's been there since roughly 2016, 2017. Median height is approximately 40 feet with that rising canopy roof structure, which is just over the 40-feet line. On the far right is the existing Verizon cell tower, which is at 100 feet above finish grade, and then the existing pit center, which is directly opposite where we're proposing the visiting side bleachers, which is, again, at 40 feet, plus, once you install that temporary canopy, we're just over that 40-foot mark. Next. This slide kind of captures pretty much everything that we discussed. On the top right there are two sections, so you get the, for this right top, is a section of the bleachers, as well as the press box with the canopy. The center top is the elevator tower, and then on the bottom there is the proposed elevations. So I'll grab my chi chi here and give some general heights of what you're looking at there. So the press box roof, which is what the variance is looking for acceptance, the canopy itself would be at 42 feet 5/8ths. The top of the actual press box structure, the roof line, is at 33 feet 11 and 7/8ths, so below the variance requirement. As far as the elevator tower, the elevator tower roof structure, roof deck is at 39 foot 8, below the required height. It's the three rising parapet walls that encompass, there's an exhaust fan that's required at the top of elevator shafts, that's there just for safety purposes, so there's a physical barrier there for a technician that's working on that exhaust fan. That's what brings us up over the 40-foot mark. So that is the presentation, if anybody's got any questions? Yes, sir?
You couldn't get any of the GAs or the guys who have to lug the stuff up there now to come in and plead your case?
We could have tried. I think we got it.
The former GA.
Well, I'm going to just thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we're going to go to questions. Does the board have any questions? If not.
Are there exterior lights mounted high up?
There are, there are exterior lights that are at.
Floodlights?
There are, so it's a D1 campus field, so there are a set of six lights, I believe, three on both sides, and those extend beyond the 40 feet.
There's no game, everything's turned off?
Yeah, when there's no game, there's no, you know, no practice or games, they're all turned off, yeah.
And, so, but you're required to, a D1 school, you're required to film?
Yeah, so we, now that we're with the MAC, we're filming for SNY as well as ESPN, so there are minimum requirements, and those mounted cameras need to be at above 30 feet, so that's why the press boxes are at that height.
This is somewhat a D1 requirement?
It is.
It is a D1 requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we have that currently on the, on the existing home side, this is actually bringing the requirement to the visiting side, so you can, you can film from both sides.
So is that, is that your hardship? I mean, you have to, what is your hardship?
The hardship is, you know, we're a D1 school with a D1 facility requiring to be able to film and provide access.
Would you like to help with that?
Well, I mean, a hardship, I mean, you know, technically, the hardship has to, has to do with the, with the site, not your.
Well, to say, we're, so we are constricted with, you know, the, the field is where it is, it's been there forever, we're constricted on three sides, right? We got the Bobby V Center on one side, you got the golf course on the other end zone. On the westerly side is the golf course property line itself, so short of finding a new location for the actual field, that's.
Because you are in a residential zone, correct?
We are in R3 zone.
And you're operating a, what is that, what is this called? Commercial, a school?
It's just the university, the regulations of permitted uses.
No.
Because they're residential.
They're permitted in a residential building.
Yep.
Any more questions from the board? Joe, do you have a question?
Well, I'm going to continue along the hardship path. So you're saying that this, the existing location of the field is the only place where you can have a field?
Correct, on 5151 Park Avenue, that is correct.
And what about West Campus?
There is no, due to wetlands, there is no viable location for, for a field such as this. And again, this has been, this field has been here since probably the 70s, 80s.
It hasn't had a 42-foot thing on it.
Actually, it currently does. So the end zone building, the cell tower, is, is over 42 feet.
Okay, so the existing characteristics are in excess of, are at or in excess of the.
The surrounding characteristics are correct, yes.
Jane, another question? I'm sorry, is the height measured from the average grade all the way around?
Yeah, it's fairly flat around there, so there's really not much grade change. The grade change actually happens on the golf course side.
So hypothetically?
It's from finish grade.
Hypothetically, if the finish grade went up a little bit around the tower to get it to 40 feet, would that work?
Hypothetically?
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically?
Hypothetically, yeah.
Let's just.
Yeah, I mean, there's drainage issues and everything else where you don't want to dump water back onto, onto the field, right? So.
Yes.
Yes.
Hypothetically, I think that's what you were saying.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Give me a second. So there, so the other, there are other parts of the stadium that exceed the 42 feet, and there's a cell tower on the property that exceeds the 42 feet. Is there anything else that exceeds the 42 feet?
Well, if we look at 5151 Park Ave as a whole, not just campus field, because it's all one property, I'd say two-thirds of our buildings are well in excess of 40 feet.
Okay, so we're not, we're not setting new, we're not setting new.
No precedent.
New parameters.
No, we've been in front of the ZBA board multiple times over the last several years for this height variance.
Matt, when they, when buildings were built, I guess some of the dormitories exceed 40 feet? And they've come, they've come through the board before? It just not, hasn't come in front of you?
The hockey rink was here a couple of years ago.
It's been in front of this board, just not.
And there's been a lot of times they've come in front of this board on the height?
Yeah, every single time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Joe, are you still?
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Name an address, please?
Oh, no, I'm the.
You're just walking that way?
VP of Construction Facilities for the.
Do you have anything you'd want to say also?
Again, I think it's all.
Just name an address.
It's Marquezzo, I also work at Sacred Heart. I'm the Vice President of Construction Facilities for the university. I've been there 16 years, I think we've done at least 15 variances since I've been there, and they're all hyped, you know, complications with, without the, again, from what Carmelo said, the restrictions of the sites, but this is a flat site. Again, it's all within harmony of all the other existing structures around the, around that campus, so, around that field, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this application? No, we're going to close this application, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to number five in our agenda, which is 159 Tamar Drive, which has been continued to January 8th, 2026, this means, right? Doesn't matter, but.
That's correct, yes.
Change it, because it says 2025 in here, but this is just for us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now we're moving on to number four in our general docket, right? Which is 49 John Street, map 243, parcel 24, petition of Incubator Associates LP for variance of the zoning regulations, section 6.3.1. To utilize the first floor of a residential dwelling unit and to occupy 100% of a building in a commercial zone for residential use. Permission to construct a residential dwelling unit to the first floor of existing building, premises DZ, D-zone.
Chair, members of the commission, Chris Rousseau, with Rousseau &amp; Rizzi LLC, offices at 10 Saskatoon Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant. Glad to be before you. First off, congratulations to those of you who were re-elected. Your prizes, you get to listen to me for hours and hours for the next year, so congrats on that, but happy to be before you on this. So, the property is located at 49 John Street in the DCD zone. So the property is located at 49 John Street in the DCD Zone. And as was stated, we're asking a variance to make the second building, I call it the second building, it's the rear building, fully residential, including its ground floor. This is for a studio apartment. I'll show you a floor plan of it. That's only 363 square feet. It's basically the remaining space of the ground floor on that building that's otherwise occupied by a two-bay garage, car garage, that services the legal units that are on the upper floor. So the building's essentially already dominated by residential, it's like 87% residential. It's just this remaining 363 square feet. This is a property that sits across from Southport Green, which is 100% residential, including obviously therefore ground floor residential as well. So basically, it's matching the buildings, you can see Southport Green right there, that are directly across from it. We're also reducing a parking nonconformity. So on the site with the two buildings, there's the first floor of the front building, the one that's closest to John Street. That's an office that's a little bit over 3,600 square feet, that requires 19 spaces of parking. On top of that office on the second floor is three one-bedroom units that would require three spaces. And then there's the two one-bedroom units that are in the building that we're talking about, that would only require two spaces. So there's only really 17 spaces on the site. There's some that, like, go off the property line, like closer to John Street, that really wouldn't count under the regulations. So it's a, it's a site that is underparked. But I think making a mix between commercial and residential helps with that. That's where, like, if you look at your regulations, shared parking analysis and reduction for parking based on compatibility of uses, having this be, you know, part commercial, part residential helps with that situation. So, again, so this is John Street, this is the inside curve, because John Street kind of curves from Old Post Road into where you can see the train tracks, we're on the inside of that. Again, it features two buildings, one's the mixed-use building, and then the second being this building that we're talking about. It's still visually, as you approach it, most people approach it from Old Post Road, it looks like a commercial property, because this building here is so close to the front. It's what you see first. And really, it's not until, and that's the first floor commercial right there in that building. It's not until you come around this curve, when you're starting to enter into the Southport Green area, and then down here, if you know this remainder of John Street right down here, this is all residential as well. It's not until here that you see this building. So I think it still presents itself, at least as a mixed-use property, but definitely the commercial is the first part that you, that you see. So just to kind of go through the plans and show you what we're talking about here. So this is a survey. You can see it laid out. There's the building, it's basically directly the front building, that's directly on Pequot Avenue. Then you have the parking area. You can see, this is an older survey, you can see, like, some of the spaces are crossing into the property line. And then here's this building here in the back. And right here, there's two garage bays, and then there's a blank wall. This unit that we're talking about, and I'm going to show you the floor plan in a second, it's actually accessed from behind the building. It's just up in this corner right here, and there's a bathroom right here that it utilizes. So it's not even accessed from the front of the building. So really, just size-wise, doesn't lend itself to being commercial, and also just how it's oriented. So you can see here, this is the floor plan of the unit, back corner, here's the entrance into it in the back of the building. This portion right here is 298 square feet. So it's a studio. Kitchen, it's a long hallway, and then the bathroom closet, which are minimal. It's very small. And then, show you some pictures, just so you can see the site. So this would be, this shot right here is if you're coming down Old Post Road. And so you can see here, this kind of is blend for both sides. This right here is a single-family house. This is the ground floor commercial. Up here is the residential. Again, that complies with the regulations. This is Southport Green, which is in the same zone, it's in the DCD. This is all residential. And then this is a shot right here from our site, looking across the street. You can see directly across from this building is the entrance to some of the units on Southport Green. Looking at the site, so again, this is the first floor commercial, second floor residential of that building that's closest to Pequot Ave. It's, you don't see this second building, you have to come around the corner, and then you see the building that we're talking about. You can see, here's the parking area, obviously, two garage bays, there's no door here for access if this was a commercial space. It's actually, and the unit doesn't even start right here, it's back in the corner. This is another angle of it. This is more of the parking area. And then here, you can see, there's a couple parking spaces back there. That's where, you know, this tenant can pull in, and the door's right there at the back of the building. And so, yeah, this is, this is the back of the site. We went to our neighbors, have a petition, they're in support. You know, reducing the parking demand, because the, the space is small. So from a commercial point of view, under the regulations, it requires two parking, parking spaces, it's not a lot. But if someone were to use it for, you don't want to... Oh, yeah, no, I'm like, all right. But if something like a yoga studio or anything like that went in there, I think it could significantly add to the demand of parking on the site, which is already underparked. And if you know that area is Southport, it's already a little tight on parking down there. There's not a lot of on-street parking, there's kind of the situation with Equinox where there's a lot of spaces that get used up. So I think bringing it down to just the parking demand for a studio unit ensures, helps ensure that this site has as much parking as it, as it needs to service both the commercial and the residential that's already legally conforming on the site. So regarding the basis for granting a variance, the reduction of a nonconformity could serve as a separate basis for the granting of a variance. I know you've heard many of us Land use attorneys say that to you before. That's what we're doing. The use of this living area, whether it's commercial versus residential, has a direct impact on the nonconformity. And, and so, again, this argument that by designating this small space, 363 square feet, as residential, that lightens the parking demand on this site. I think the existing building, which was also built in the 1950s, is another basis. It already has legal residential there that dominates the building 87% of it. That leaves this small space left over with no entrance out to the parking area, just an entrance on the back of the building. So I think it's, it's a, it's extremely small space for it to be designated for commercial rather than residential. And then I think when you look at the impact to the site and the surrounding area, that this is an appropriate variance. The way the site is laid out, I think it meets the intent of the regulations as a mixed-use property. The front building, what you see first, still has that ground floor commercial, it's right on the road. And the second red floor residential, you know, fills the, the top floor of that, and then this back building. But that commercial presence is still there. And, and again, I think it's in conformity with the area. I think this board knows, you know, because there's been some applications that have been before you, that there's more residential in coming to this area. 250 Pequot Avenue, which was also in a Design Business District, that's approved for 100% residential, including ground floor for 18 units. And there was an application for 204 Old Post Road before you recently. That was also, it was eight units, 100% residential, including the ground floor. And then I think these petitions also show, you know, support from the neighbors to keep it, you know, essentially as it is. But that's the funny thing, we're not actually proposing any work to the property, just to leave it as-is. My client bought the property, this, this unit was already established. It wasn't until later found out that it actually needed approvals. 87% of the building was residential, but not this small little 363 square feet. So we're here to kind of clean that up, and, but not really proposing any physical work. You won't see any change here. With that happening, answer any questions.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Before we start, I have a question. Can I just ask this, because I'm so confused about, like, what's, where 49 John Street is? Because then, on your petition, you have people signing it from 49 John Street.
They're, they're in units, because there's separate units here. So there, some of them are tenants in the units, and then I think you see, there's a few signatures from Elmwood, and this is, this is Elmwood Drive of Southport Green right here. So there's, there were some neighbors here that also signed.
And so some people who sign this petition are actually tenants?
They're all, they're tenants there.
And their landlord going for this approval?
Correct, yeah. Because, I mean, for them, it would be, for them, I think it would be the most impactful, probably, because if a, if a commercial came in there, it would, they would start chewing up more parking.
And then one more question before others.
Sure.
Just also, is, is this, that you're asking a variance for now, already being used to, is he trying to right a wrong?
Yes. He's legalizing it, yes. He was, he was under the impression that it was legal. The other units were legal, it was this small portion, which, I don't know if you didn't realize it, I didn't handle the transaction when he did it, but that this 363 feet, even though the rest of it was residential, this wasn't actually cited for residential. So now he's found out about it, and we're trying to legalize it.
Thank you so much. Okay, questions from the board? Who would like to go first?
I only have one.
Please. Brian?
Does this property carry a variance for the underparked situation, or is it just underparked by nature?
I didn't see a variance on this. I think it was probably, it could have predated any type of, it might be pre-existing, nonconforming. I didn't see any variance.
I didn't, I didn't see, I didn't look.
Okay, so we don't know.
Yeah, I, when I researched it, I didn't see any.
Okay, any more questions? All right. Katie, do you have any questions?
I don't. I mean, the mainly question was, is it currently being used as residential? And the answer was given, yes, it is, so.
Yes.
I guess if we said no, we just have to kick somebody out?
Kick somebody out, and then it would be commercial, presumably.
More parking.
More parking demand, yes. And actually, oddly enough, increasing the nonconformity, because it would drive the parking requirement up.
Please. My question's from Matt.
Kind of a catch-22.
Zoning regulations have a minimum for residential use, like studio size? Is there a minimum?
No.
No?
Not square footage-wise, no.
Oh, yeah, square footage.
Just percentage of the building. Percentage of the building is, is a regulation that we have that can...
Right, but not like an individual unit? So, okay, so, because this is like the size of a hotel room, this is...
Yeah, pretty much.
It's a New York studio, New York City studio.
And how much rent did this guy...
I, I don't know that, sorry. No.
$5,000.
I mean, it's nice in terms of its location, I mean, it's pretty conveniently located.
Is there a sink? I don't see a sink. I see a refrigerator and a stove. I don't see a sink.
Yeah, I, yeah, all, all I have is there on the floor plan, I can tell. They would need one.
The health department would need one.
There's one in the bathroom, but I, I'm wondering if maybe next to the oven, that one of those is a sink.
I'll go on that, because she asked if they have a sink, and you said the health department, but because they're not doing any construction, his, his journey ends here, correct?
I would have to submit permits.
Then they would discover that.
He would have to get a permit to legitimize, if this board approved it, he needs a permit to legitimize the apartment.
Does the health department then go in and...
Well, they need to make sure that they got a CRO, and then along with their inspection process, they do their inspection, but the building department will do their inspection as well.
Yeah, and that, that's actually an important clarification for what I said, because if, if you went through the permit process, and for some reason, like, it needed a sink, they would have to do some work to add a sink in. But I, I believe it's, it is to code, but I, but...
Because I'm just going by...
Yeah, right, no, 100%, that's correct.
And then one other question is, because you have to go through that narrow space between the two buildings to get to the door, is that...
No, the way they, there is...
You get to the front door.
Yeah, you can't really see it well. You know where it is? I know. Hold on. The parking area, so here's the front of the parking area.
Is it a sign?
Here. Then, yeah, I can show you that too, sorry, that's, that's a good point. This right here, there's, there's drive here, and there's two spaces down here, so they pull in right there, and then the doors, the doors right there in the back. So this is like, John Street comes, it curves around, so they can enter in here and pull back here. And then the survey is, it's an old one, but it shows it.
I can show you on this, on the survey, if you'd like to see.
There, I'm looking at there, yeah, I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
What is it here, right, Chris?
Right, yeah, so you see, so if you, here's this entrance from John Street, you come to here, there's two, they mark them as 19 and 20 parking spaces. You come in, there's a door right here.
Okay, I understand. I thought they were coming in through that narrow place where the two buildings are practically...
No, no, there, there is like a backyard here for them to enjoy back here. And then the two garage bays, this garage bay, there's a stairwell that leads you up to the unit that's up here on this side of the building. And then the other garage bay, you actually come into the, the first floor here, and then there's a stairwell up that takes you to that unit.
Is there a dumpster on the property?
Yes.
Yeah, you can see it, Jay.
Yeah, it's, it's in the photo.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So there will still be, excuse me. There will still be commercial space in the other building?
Correct.
On the first floor?
Correct. I mean, the intent on the reg is, keep that intent on the reg.
And how many units residential will be on the whole property?
There would be six. There's three on the top of the first, the front building, and then there's the two currently legal ones that are to the top of the back building, and this would be the sixth.
And, so, but no new residential units are being created by this, we're just...
Practically.
...legalizing.
Correct.
Legitimizing.
What's there? Correct.
How long has the unit been occupied?
I'm not sure. I can only, my client bought it in 2019, so it's definitely been since 2019. I'm not certain as to when the prior owner started it.
So how did this get flagged, do you know?
They, they were, so, so they had, they have buyer for this property who looked into it and then realized that it was only two of the units of that building that had been approved.
Is there a fine?
No violation against it. It was never brought to the attention of our office.
Is it now before your office?
And when you read...
Before you try and rectify it, so I would say it would be penalty enough at this point.
So when we grant this, if we grant this variance, it says permission to construct a residential dwelling unit to the first floor of an existing building?
Yeah, I worded it just a little differently. Without any permits for it, they need to get a permit to...
Construct something that's already there.
Yeah, so it's, it's a matter of verbiage, but...
Legalize, yeah.
And then it says... And then it says.
I could have put legalization. I, I didn't realize it that way.
Yeah. I would, we, would it be possible if we didn't say that? Like legalize and, could we say it that we're approving something that already exists instead of?
The term legalization is, is fine, but if.
No, it doesn't say that.
I know that. I didn't put it down.
Can we, can we say that then when we read it in?
Construct a, you know, make modifications to an already existing apartment is fine.
For the record, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, because it's.
For history's sake, it's something.
You might, you could add to the end, maybe in order to legalize it, in order to legalize the unit.
In order to legalize an already existing apartment.
Okay. And you'd be okay with that?
Yeah, no problem.
And then one more question here, the way this is written, as to Joe's question. Because this says to occupy 100% of a building in a commercial zone for residential use.
Correct.
But Joe said to you, is there a commercial here? And you said, yes.
Yes. But this, but this building, the, that one building is going to be 100% residential.
And it has the same address.
But the, the plans indicate that it's just that building.
Maybe because.
So somebody couldn't come back. I mean, it could say, it could say 100% residential for the building in the rear.
Is the map and the parcel the same?
Yes.
Because that doesn't differentiate it, correct?
That doesn't differentiate it.
So can we just make?
If you look at the vision appraisal, it shows two buildings.
Right. But if we read this in, it's saying this, we're going to give a variance for this entire building to be residential.
There's two buildings there.
Right. But this doesn't say that.
For clarification purpose. I get what you're saying.
When we get to it, depending on how you vote, we can determine.
Figure out language.
And you could even say like the southern building.
And I just want to understand from Robert's rules, when can we ask Attorney Russo how the language can change in his agreement to that? Is it now or when we?
Now.
Okay. So I just want to be clear because we don't want to discuss it later and then.
Yeah. I mean, so what I guess I could say, Chair, is that we would agree to a condition of approval that, that it would be to construct a, or make modifications to a dwelling unit in order to legalize an already existing, or legalize an existing dwelling unit in the southern building. Southern building? You think that works? Or the rear building?
I would say, yeah. I mean, that's, either way, it's in the right proximity of what you're referring to.
Okay. And you're agreeing to that now?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I just want to make sure that that.
No, I appreciate it.
Happens now. Okay. I don't have any other questions on this application. Does anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Is anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? No, we're going to close this application. Thank you.
I did get two people in line.
Oh, we did. I'm so sorry. George and Joe?
I phoned before.
Is there anyone online?
George is my guy.
Yeah, George is your guy. I don't see any.
Is there anyone online who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? I think that's a no.
I don't see anybody.
Chair says no.
Okay. We are going to, I think we're going to see Mr. Russo again.
Yes.
We are now on general docket number five, which is 249 Old South Road, map 241, parcel 165, petition of Jerry Jeffrey Rosen and Richard Mervis for a variation of zoning regulations, zoning regulations, section 3.4.1, to reduce the primary street line setback on a corner lot. Currently 29.1, proposing 31.2, permission to construct a two-story addition, premises R3.
Chair Commissioners Chris Russo with Russo and Russo LLC, offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant for the property at 249 Old South Road. It's funny, I, I've said this, some version of this before, but we played a game of guess the variance and was allowed to ask questions to try to guess the variance. I think my first question would be, is it coastal? Which this is not. My second question would probably be, is it historic? And that's what this is. My third question would probably be, is it a corner lot? And this is also a corner lot because those historic and corner lot are just classic cases that come before you. And if I found out it was historic, my first guess would be front yard setback variance because they almost always have an issue with that. Houses built in the 1800s just did not set back far from the, from the road.
Right.
They are very close up. The horse is going to get in there easy. So that's what we have here. So that, the, the request is for variance to reduce the minimum required setback of a corner lot from 40 feet to 31.2 feet in order to convert a one-car garage to a two-car garage, along with associate, associated site improvements. And this is the, the setback for the street on Pequot Avenue. This property is located in the R3 zone. It's a single-family dwelling. Again, it has two road frontages, Old South Road and Pequot Avenue. Site's located in the historic district. So all additions and exterior renovations will be reviewed after, should this be approved, of course, would be reviewed by the HDC to ensure it follows the district guidelines. We're excited because we're going to take this opportunity to make some improvements to the existing house, to bring it more into character with the original house. I'll, I'll show you that when, when I go through the plans. It is a historic house. It was built in 1860. And I don't know if you were able to visit it, drive by, but I, I think it's clear if you did that the original main frontage is really oriented towards Old South Road. And this owner and prior owners, I think, have done a great job, probably along with the HDC as well, to maintain that historic frontage. The additions have occurred opposite the Old South Road frontage on the rear of the building, but ironically, that makes them visible from what's the more traveled street, which is Pequot Avenue. And that's where you find the, this shows the two-bay garage, but that's where the one-bay garage is right now. So we're proposing to convert it to a two-bay garage, maintaining the same facade frontage. So we're not getting any closer to the street, actually frankly farther away from the street because if you notice here, the street line here actually moves away from the building as it goes this direction. So we're not increasing any nonconformity. Pequot Avenue is where the site is accessed. There's the one-car garage, and then there's also a small parking area. And I'm sure many of you know, and those who are familiar with this area know, just as we were talking about 49 John Street, this is not a part of Southport where there's on-street parking. A lot of these side streets on the southern end of Southport, Willow, Old South Road, they're barely wider than a one-lane road. If someone were to park on it, usually landscaping vehicles, it turns it into a one-lane road. The, this section of Pequot Avenue is not any better. You, you really, and if you know this, it's where Pequot Avenue has a curve here. And I drive it every day when I, after I drop my kids off to school. And there's definitely no on-street parking along this section of Pequot Ave. So you really need to park on your property because you and your guests can't park on the street. And that's one of the things we're aiming to do by creating the two-car garage. But what you also might see here, there's a parking area here, but we're also adding an additional parking area there as well. And the other important thing with that feature is it will allow somebody to turn around and pull forward out. It's really, it'd be a bad idea to back out straight out onto Pequot Avenue in this section. So I'll go through the plans. So the site is slightly nonconforming. It's a lot area. It's about 19,000 square feet. We're 20,000 required. It's nonconforming, again, typical for an old house like this. It's not conforming. Both street frontages don't meet it. Right here, along Old South Road, it's 28.2 feet. On, along Pequot Avenue, it actually gets down to 26.2 for this little picture window that comes out. And the one-bay garage actually is slightly closer. It's at 30.1. And we're proposing right here, 31.2 feet. And I really want to show you just to show what's changing. I kind of tried to line these two up. So the top is existing. And the bottom is the proposed. So you can basically see, this is being maintained. There's a chimney that's being added here. Again, that'd be reviewed by HDC. And then this is becoming from one-bay to a two-bay garage. I was talking before about some improvements we're making. You'll see there's features that you could say here on the original house that are getting added to portions of the existing house. And there's windows that are being copied. They currently look like this. They're being copied to match the original house. And there's also features on the new garage. Like you could see, again, this is proposed. These are the windows. They're, they're made to match the character of the windows that you see there. So a really nice design in providing, you know, blending what's a common amenity that you find these days in with a historic property. And again, leaving this frontage, that's along Old South Road as is. And I'll show you some pictures It's conforming to the neighborhood. This is an aerial blown-up view in which you could see, these are all other historic homes. And you could see the one directly across on Old South Road, across from us, it's 10.92 feet from its property line. On this side, it's 27.69. This large house over at 860 Pequot Avenue, that's about the same distance that we're proposing for the garage at 31.77. So again, it's, it's something that's a common feature that you find in the historic district. Shows the floor plans. Kind of going existing to proposed. So this is the existing kind of, you know, grade level foundation plan. And so this is getting bumped out right here. This is existing. Here's the one-bay garage. And it's going to this two-day garage, which about 500 square feet. So you can see it right there.
Is the garage getting expanded or is the existing garage being demolished and?
Be demolished. Yeah, to make way for it. Yep. So it's, it's fairly straightforward. Trying to see where some of my pictures are that I have that I could show you. But, but yeah, it's, I submitted a petition in support of the application. Did you all get a copy of that? Those are the surrounding property owners. There's one property, if you drove by the site, there's one property that's currently under development, so they weren't able to reach that person. But, but all the surrounding property owners, butters, signed the petition in support of the application. And so as far as hardship, I think there's multiple basis for hardship. First is historic house in historic district. Always a challenge to maintain its character while also allowing the property modernize. 1860s, obviously before cars, there's no garages. So that's an improvement that prior owners and this applicant, I think, have, have tried to make to the house, but respecting the historic nature of the house and particularly preserving that Old South Road frontage. Again, historic houses are frequently nonconforming as to front yard setback. This case we have here, they were constructed before the regulations when house, and, and this is a time when houses were purposely located close to the street. And this is particularly problematic for this house because, and it's another basis for hardship, is the fact that it's a corner lot. And a house isn't conforming on Pequot Avenue or Old South Road. So you kind of have to choose one. If it wasn't a corner lot, the addition could go within 15 feet of the property line. But what I think the applicant has done is propose an addition. One, it's following the existing facade on the one-story garage. So it's not getting closer to the road than the one-story garage. It's more conforming to the rest of the house. And the other thing is, to be clear, it doesn't create any new nonconformities with regards to other standards. It's not violating a side yard setback or rear setback. It doesn't violate the lot coverage or the floor area standards. And another thing I'll note too, is when you measure it, it's actually the, the addition is 40 feet from Pequot Avenue. So I think there's enough of a buffer there to kind of meet the intent of the regulations. And I also think there's a, a safety aspect as well where you don't have an area around you that's conducive to on-street parking. So you really have to have you and your guests park onsite and also have the ability to turn around. And that's what we're doing with this application. Happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Yeah. You probably already said this, but you're basically reducing the nonconformity.
In the sense of we're pulling it back a little bit, it's pulling back a little bit from what the existing garage is. Yes.
Nonconforming, but now it's a little bit less.
Now it's a little bit less. Correct. Correct.
Should we move? Do you have any question?
No, I do not.
I have a question of Matt. Is the fact that it's in the historic district, that's a, that's been confirmed, but it is a legitimate hardship? Or is that just?
From multiple aspects of what they command, I would say yes.
Specifically written?
No. But.
Described anywhere?
I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't say that it is. No. But that is, it's not anywhere in our regulations. But the historic commission has requirements that need to be met. And in some cases, they can't avoid having to seek a variance because of those requirements.
You, Commissioner, and, and I don't know if I, I might have stated that wrong. I, I don't necessarily think it's because it's in a historic district commission, but just because it's a historic house that was created prior to the implementation of the regulations. And it is a house that, I mean, the HDC would never want you to demolish it and put it in a conforming location. They want you to preserve it. So I mean, and that's why, like my house is not in historic district, but it's an 1820 house. And the funny thing is, whenever I add to the back of my house, I'm going to have to come to you to ask for a front setback variance because my house is fully within the front setback. So it's just a problem that these historic houses face.
And historic district commission has not seen this yet.
They have not. They require that we go to them after all land use approvals are obtained.
Right. Thank you. Joe?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you cite one of the hardships is it's in a, on a corner lot?
Yes. That, I think the fact that it's historic and I understand that there's a lot of houses that are on corner lots, but part of the problem here is.
Let me just maybe ask my, I'll ask my.
Sure, sure.
If it was on a square lot, would you be here?
No.
Okay.
It's a 15-foot setback.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay. Any other questions for counsel? Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here or online who'd like to speak in favor of this application? No? Is there anyone here or online to speak in opposition of this application? No? Okay. We're going to close this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on to our general docket number six. This is our final application. Assuming it's you. 34 Woodbridge Avenue, map 74, parcel 158, petition of Dustin and Maris Mandre for a variation of zoning regulations, section 3.4.1, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, currently 29, to dwelling and 25 to front landing, proposing 28.2 to dwelling and 22.7 to open front porch. And section 5.3.1 to increase the total lot coverage from 15%, currently 16.5, proposing 15.9. Permission to construct a two-story and second floor addition with a new front porch and stairs, premises R3 zone. Would you like to come forward?
Architect Bill is also on.
Okay. So you're, so this, so Bill is going to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes.
Okay, Bill. Name and address?
William Levy, 101 Mallard Street, Fairfield, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, so what we found, we had a permit to discuss, to construct a rear dormer. Once we started the construction, the joists were being held by about three inches of the joist itself. So we decided that that's probably not a good idea to construct on top of that. So we decided to go with a full second story. So the reason we would like to pull out the front entry, just 12 inches, just to give the house a little, you know, a zazz. And that will also give us some extra space at the staircase because the staircase is right in front. And that's pretty much it. The house is currently in the, in, the whole house is nonconforming at the moment.
Okay. Okay. Questions? Anyone? Joe?
I do. I just want to, I want to just confirm that you're actually making the house more conforming, reducing the nonconformity in terms of coverage.
Yes. We're, we're taking out a portion of the deck to reduce the lot coverage to make it better.
Right. So you're getting closer to conforming.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on this application? No? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here in opposition to this application? No? Okay. We're going to close this application. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna close this application, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone need a break, or should we just continue on?
Now ahead.
Rock on.
Shake their heads vigorously. Go.
I'm sure. So you said that we could stay and hear the.
It should be, well, let's guess, I would say in about seven minutes. Because that's probably long.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are we allowed, since there's only one applicant here, are we allowed to switch the order of voting? Is that allowed?
I don't see any reason that we can't. Joe's the expert on Robert's rules. Joe, can we change the order?
I think so.
Okay, so we're gonna change the order. Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Okay, so we are now gonna reopen, we're gonna close the public portion of the hearing and we're going to go into voting on our applications.
You should vote to move the order. So I would move that we move application number six to the top of the consideration list.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone said yes. Okay. So now we are going to vote. So our first application is general docket number six, 340, 34 Woodbridge Avenue. They're looking to construct a two-story and second floor addition. Can I have a motion to approve?
Brian moves.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's gonna be a very nice addition to the neighborhood. I think it fits with what is generally around it. And they're reducing a non-conformity.
Two non-conformities, actually.
Two non-conformities.
And it's a non-conforming lot.
Yep. Oh, yeah. My half.
Okay, any other discussion? No? Okay, we will vote.
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Yes.
Brian, yes. Jane, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that's been approved. Thank you.
Build well. That's not a sound heard here often. Clapping.
I don't need to bring up continued dockets again, now that we're voting, because we already continued it. Okay, so we're gonna go to general docket number one, we're going to 31 Cambridge Suite. They want to construct a one-story and two-story addition with a front porch and a rear deck. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Jane, second.
Jane, second, discussion.
Well, we have a lot to say. Okay. So these were not questions for the architect who made the presentation, but there was a lot of, of the presentation talking about hypotheticals, like if it was this big, if it was this big, none of that matters. The point is, the lot is a certain size and they want to propose a building that is way over the FAR and way over the coverage.
They have the hardship of shape of the lot, they have, I mean, their hardship is established. We've heard, I don't, I don't think we've ever heard.
So tell me what, just because you said it, when you say, what are their hardships in your mind?
Their hardship is that their lot is undersized. That their lot has an odd shape, which are classic non-conformities, or classic foundations for hardship. So that's simple enough. We have, I don't think I've heard two attorneys or two presenters come onto this, come before us and not point out that if their lot was conforming, that they would be building as a right within the place, within the area that they're living on. I understand that it's, and I know our proclivities with FAR and everything else, but if you look at the homes in the area around it, it's not, they're not building a monster, they're not building a, you know, a McMansion by really any extent. It's, it's, I don't, I don't think they're asking for something that is out of hand. I think what is, what is there doesn't, doesn't not serve the area. All what's there also informs to the neighborhood, but the homes that have been built up around it, the general area, if you drive through there, has plenty of colonials, it has plenty of second story additions there. The way it looks to fit on the property itself, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an out-of-hand ask. Yeah.
So back to what I was saying. FAR has to do with proportion of building to lot size. So just because the lot, just because the lot is a funny shape, doesn't mean that you don't have to make a building that doesn't fit the lot. I think proposing 46.5% is, that 6%, 6.5% is significant. And so I am not in favor of this application.
Joe, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't ask this, is this a knockdown and a new construction?
No, it's an addition.
Okay. But it's a, it's, it's quadrupling the size of the house.
So what's the current square foot of the house?
700 and something, isn't it?
No, that's a.
Oh, sorry, sorry, 979. So they're tripling the size of the house. 979 to 2729, that's, that's three times the size.
Okay, so it's now, it's currently 19 and they, they're gonna go to 27, yes, big addition. And then did the addition is the side, the front and the back, right, based on that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's not a small addition, but it's, I don't, again, and I know our proclivities on FAR, but if you drive through the neighborhood and the, look at the houses that were shown in the pictures, it is not a, I don't think in any way that it is a, an over, an overbuild for the area.
But you don't know what's, how many, what that FAR is for these houses, you're just guessing.
I'm, I'm, I'm going by the character of the neighborhood, I'm going on, I, I know the numbers, but I also look at the character of the neighborhood. I don't, and if it was a structure that was going to halt over the area, or if it was gonna be outside of the character of what was built, whether the, my neighbor's lot is larger than my lot, or, you know, they had 100 more linear feet. If it's, if it's not a looming structure or canyoning the street, or doing all the things that we concern ourselves with in terms of density of the, of the neighborhood or the builds on the street, then I would, I would agree with you 100% that it's, that it would be too much. But based on the shape of the lot, the existing characteristics and what's around it in terms of the aesthetic that would be there after the build, I really don't think that it is a, I don't think it's an overbuilt structure for what's around it. I get the lot.
So I think, I think a lot, I think that, I do think it's a big ask. I think that, you know, 7.5% over coverage, another 6.5 over FAR is a lot, you know, and not to mention every single street sideline, rear sideline, side sideline, every sideline variance is, or setback is decreasing or increasing, whatever, it's getting less conforming. That said, I, I, that is a big hardship, the size of the lot and the pie-shaped nature of the lot, the fact that all of the neighbors seem to be in favor of it. And, you know, we gave a variance bigger than this to a house around the corner on Riverside. I believe that was, I don't see him looking it up, but I think we gave it on like 9% or something. So not that that's precedent, but we have taken hardships on these small lots for structures that are not, it's not a flood zone, so it's not lifted, it's not like gonna be staring down at everyone. The neighbors are okay with it, you know, we have the purview, we, we can say yes to it because we have that hardship, even though it is a lot, but it's less than we've done in that neighborhood previously. So I would be inclined to say, let them do it.
So yes, the neighbors signed off on it, but I think neighbors sign anything in front of them.
Always.
Not when, not when it comes to their properties at all.
Well, it, you know, this is your neighbor, it's hard to.
We've had, we've had enough people sit in front of us and we had an entire neighborhood show up here, somebody wanted to put a second floor on the house.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if, if it's gonna cause a problem for somebody, the thing that they will defend first and foremost is that.
Well, actually, what they're signing is, it says your signature below will also will confirm that you have seen the plans, that's all they're saying.
Right, but we also, we receive no emails.
We know, it'd be interesting.
We receive, we receive no emails. We receive nothing.
Joe, what do you think?
The house is big, I'm just going through the assessor's records now to see what the size in the neighborhood is. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna say anything more if you give me another 90 seconds.
This house across the street, it's probably bigger.
Yeah.
No. My left. And again, it's not precedent, it doesn't matter what's across the street.
Yeah.
At all.
I just think, and looking at this and talking about FAR, I mean, they are going to just take the entire lot. And I, I know, let me just.
Yeah.
And I, at some point, like, where does it end? Where do we say, you know, we, these are regulate, like, this is a reason. They could, being that they have an odd shaped lot, being that they're non-conforming, they could come to us with a, with a plan. It just doesn't have to be this big.
I mean, listen, they could, they could come to us with anything they chose, but the, I mean, they could take up less of it. We have, and again, we operate on no precedent on this board, but we have approved in the last six months dividing properties where the rear setback was at four feet. We've, we continuously allow properties depending on what's around them, depending on the opinions of the neighbors, the, to, to grant variances based on the use, based on the existing conditions of the neighborhood. We listen to the neighborhood, we listen to the town, we're here to represent. And yes, this is not a small build, but based on what is in the neighborhood around it, based on the remaining functionality, they still have a decent front yard, they have a small backyard, but that has a lot to do with the shape of the yard.
Joe, 90 seconds.
Yeah, it's just about done. So there are two houses among the 10 or so on the street that are over 25, that are over 2,000. They are both at 2,500. This house is, again, 20% bigger than, than anything else on the street. I remember we had a, a house down by the beach and it overpowered the neighborhood and we were all pretty, I think we were unanimous in not granting that one. And this is close, I mean, this is gonna be the biggest house on the street by.
What makes perusing it again, sorry?
2,900, over 2,900. The next biggest house is 2,500, there are two in that range, 24, 2,500.
This one's not gonna be 29, it's gonna be 27.
Sorry, 27.
What the house across the street is.
The things that you said we've passed before, they haven't all been unanimous.
100%, listen, there's, there's, there's no argument, and I'm the first one to say that I, I voice, I voice in opposition rarely, but when they're, when they're way out of line.
Look at how big 31.
I think that's what she's doing right now.
Yeah, what do you want me to look at?
31 Cambridge, that's across the street.
As I was talking about.
No, then 34?
34 is a cape. I'm interested in the one to the right of that seeming bigger, but I can tell you right now, so.
Yeah, that one.
That one's not bigger.
This one, like this one right here. Where that, that's big.
Yeah, but I don't know what their, we don't know what their lot size was, we don't know, they have big back. I just think.
Open space. Matt, is that open space behind them?
Across the street, all the houses butt up against the marsh. So all their.
What do you want to, which one did you want to know?
34.
Pretty big, is what Fisher appraisal says.
It's gotta be small. I've been in that house, it's a little cape. How would this address the one next to it is?
36 or 37.
Yeah, it's like 79 square feet. But that's a cape, that's a little cape that they didn't turn to a colonial, but then, pretty roosted, you know what stress this is?
I'm trying to figure it out. Oh, wait, let me look. We have more, I'm not gonna move on, but I just want to make sure we're, we're moving our discussion in a new way or bringing up new points, because I think.
I just want, so Joe, you looked at every house on Cambridge and what the square footage was?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's easy, you can check me.
Yeah. What is 34, 38? No, it's down.
18. Try in here. I mean, there's certainly other houses in the neighborhood.
Okay, we take it. Okay. All right, if there's no more discussion, I think we should go for a vote. People, anyone ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay, so Katie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Oh.
Jane, and I'm also. Okay, so that application variance has been denied. Okay, we're gonna move on to our second general docket, which is 515 Park Avenue, Sacred Heart University is looking to construct an elevator shaft that would bring them over the allowable height. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, and a second?
Jane, second.
Jane, okay, discussion.
There's no reason not to do this. It's, it's not, you're not gonna find a classic hardship, but there's, the economic viability of the property in a lot of respects is tied to their ability to provide video to multiple outlets. We do actually, because if it makes the property less viable, or they have to reduce their ability to provide that video, they may not be able to have the stadium anymore. I don't wanna cost them a football team. But at the end of the day, it's eight inches of the cover over a fan that we're talking about for this variance and the canopy for when it rains on a building that no one can see unless you're in this stadium.
I'd love to have this said in a context with a hardship next to it. Can anyone say? I would like to say. I think I might want one. So this is an R3 zone, which is primarily a residential zone, and the, the zoning guidelines were designed for residential properties. This is clearly not a residential property and it is a, it's commercial, it's a consider, it's a university.
It's a permitted use, it's a university permitted.
But it's not a, it's not a residential, it's not a house.
It's a non-conforming use, right?
Right, it's not, is it a non-conforming use?
Yeah, it's not a residence.
Isn't it a permitted use?
It's a permitted.
You can't ask Matt questions during.
I can't, oh.
It's a, it's a permitted, it's a permitted use.
Who's got the book?
It's a permitted use in a, no, it's a, it's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use within the R3 zone.
It's a permitted use in R3?
Yes.
Okay, so it's permitted use, it's not a non-conforming.
Yeah.
It's permitted. But, but those regulations were designed for residential properties.
That's correct.
And this is not a residential property. It's, it's, it's a stadium, it's a school, it's, you know, we also, and again, there's no, no precedent, we have granted, like they said, so many. They had, their hockey rink had to be a little higher than it needed to be. The.
Almost every door.
There's existing structures on the property, on that, in that stadium that are already the same height, it's 42 feet. And the reality is, it's two feet. So I would say, for me, the hardship is, it's primarily designed to be a residential zone and they're using it as commercial or educational or whatever, whatever, it's not residential.
Okay. Anyone else want to add to this discussion?
It's two feet.
No? Joe? No? Okay, we are going to vote. Katie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so that application, that variance is granted. Okay, next we're moving on to number four, because number three was continued. Number four is 49 John Street and they are looking to construct, okay. This needs to, we're gonna read this in differently as the applicant has agreed, and So they want to, they want to construct, they want to legalize a current use in a DCD zone. And we also want to make sure that as we read this in, that we are talking specifically about this back building. about this back building, not the entire premises of forty-nine John Street. I think that's good. Okay, motion to approve.
So moved.
And second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I move, we amend, we amend number four to read permission to legalize a residential use on the first floor of the South Building.
Okay, motion to sec, I'll second that motion. Let's vote on that motion.
Yes.
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 Okay, now we're gonna, discussion of that motion. Now we're gonna discuss this.
I think, I think, I know.
So, we just changed the language. So, is there any discussion on this application?
They're, they're, they're legitimizing.
Yes.
They could have hidden it. They're legitimizing something that's already there. And it's, no, it's no one's benefit to make that be commercial and use more parking.
Any other discussion?
Someone homeless.
I'm just surprised, I'm surprised that our zoning regulations don't have minimum sizes for...
Remember, you can't talk to him.
Anymore. I'm just saying, I'm looking at Matt, but I'm not talking to him. I'm just saying...
Everybody. I know, it is surprising.
Speaking to the void.
There are minimum sizes, but they're not for like an overall, I mean, it's a hotel room.
I think they're a function of having more, more affordable houses.
Okay, if no more discussion, I think we're ready to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that variance has been approved as read in on our motion. Okay.
Amended, yeah.
Yeah. Number five, two forty-nine Old South Street, they want to construct an attached two-story addition. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Three seconds.
Okay. Discussion?
I think it's going to be pretty. I think it's going to be, I know, you want the hardship first.
Well, I just think that's our job, so...
They are, they are going to reduce nonconformity on the site through the process of this project, which is almost always a basis for the granting of a variance.
In the setback back...
In the, in the rear setback.
Primary, no, the reading, primary setback line is going from twenty-nine to thirty-one.
Okay, I'm just looking at the description.
They're dialing it back.
They're bringing it back almost two feet.
Okay, there we go.
So...
Yay.
Okay. I also think it's just, this is a corner lot, which they wouldn't be in front of us had they not been on one. Okay. I think that is a very textbook hardship. Okay, any other discussion?
None.
Okay, we're gonna vote. Katie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that application and variance has been approved. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last, is there anything on our last, did you have an item, general business?
Yes. One second. So hopefully some of you were able to see an email that I sent earlier this morning about a freedom of information session that had occurred on, on Monday night, and I sent you the link to the recording of it, so it's still accessible. And one of the things that was discussed was basically this, Jane, if you could send that. So this is from the Freedom of Information Commission website, and it talks in general terms of the general regulations of, of, of freedom of information. If you look to, I believe it's number, number two... Okay, an agency is required, that's notice of meetings, minutes. The minutes of each agency must be made available to the public within seven days of the session to which they refer in the agency's office or in the office of the municipal clerk. And the vote of each member on any issue must be in writing, made available within tw- forty-eight hours of the vote. And I, I didn't wanna go really digging, but my impression confirmed by my own emails as to the receipt of our decisions and of our minutes is that we may not be actually doing that in accordance with, with the Freedom of Information Act. And, and so what I would like to do is propose this, this motion that says that in accordance with section one dash two twenty-five of the Connecticut General Statutes, the votes of the Fairfield Board of Zoning Appeals of each person voting as a member of the ZBA be reduced to writing and made available for public inspection within forty-eight hours, and shall also be recorded in the minutes of the session at which taken, not later than seven days after the date of the session to which the minutes refer, such minutes shall be available for public inspection. Now, the item in quotes is directly from the statute, and then it goes on in the office of the Fairfield Town Clerk and the Fairfield Town Planning Office. When copies are made available to the public as described above, they shall also be circulated by email to ZBA members and alternates. And then finally, prior to the approval of the minutes at a subsequent meeting of the ZBA, the minutes shall include the additional statement draft not reviewed or approved by the board. And that allows us to meet the requirement of the timing before we've actually voted on them, which is the standard practice for agencies. So...
How does that differ, Joe, from what we're doing now?
Well, if, based on when I see votes, it's more than forty-eight hours that we get the, the, the decisions of the board, and it's weeks after the last meeting that we see the minutes.
So would you like to come to our office during the course of the day to see how busy we are?
I'm, this is, anybody could walk in...
The decisions are emailed out on Monday. Two days later, we have, unless you want us to come in on Saturday to do it, I'm happy to do that also. But they're, they're mailed out on Monday, and our secretary gets the minutes done as quickly and effectively as she possibly can every single month.
Okay, and, and I...
And I understand that there's a timeline for them. There's a timeline for everyone. But, again, we are, you know, staffed as we are, and we do the best that we can to get them out as quickly as we possibly can correctly.
Is, is the video available?
Yes.
Video's available the next day.
Okay, so that's... That's not a video, by the way, though. We're not on camera, right?
Well, you're on camera.
We're on camera.
But, oh, but I, we're on camera, but...
You're, it's on YouTube the next day.
Yeah. But I thought you said we're recorded, we're not, oh, we're not live. That's what you...
We're not, we're not live.
Streaming on...
No, no, but it is, it is...
Do you watch the video of any of the town?
The next day.
So that's immediate.
Somebody hasn't watched it, they can...
But more than anything else, I, I see no reason to put something like this on the record. We're already governed by state statute. The, we, we understand, we're on, we're on record on television.
What does this mean, be reduced to writing?
That's the language in the statute.
What does that mean, be reduced to writing?
It means it has to be written, it has to be down on written word.
Yeah.
So it can't be the video.
That's the language of the statute.
I think this question is very good, like, why do we need to motion and vote on anything? It's already state statute.
We don't.
Because I, I, I'm, I'm not at all confident that we're meeting the requirements of the statute, and anybody can go and say, I want the minutes from the, from the December meeting, and if they come next, a week from tomorrow, and they ask for them and they're not ready, then they can file a complaint against us with...
But an FOI request can be thirty days.
It's FO, it's thirty days to provide the information, well, thirty, it's not thirty, it's thirty days to require information that needs to be researched, it's not thirty days to get the minutes. It says the minutes, the, the statute is clear, the minutes have to be available, and I appreciate, and if you're, you, you, you feel that we need more staffing, I don't, you know, I mean...
Matt, has anyone ever come in and asked for the minutes?
No.
And, like, within twenty-five hours?
And I, but I think, and a basic, to Brian's point...
Usually it's, usually it's the next month.
We cannot take a motion in our group.
State statute.
Who's talked about state statute.
Proven state statute.
I, we can't vote on that. We can't vote that we agree, it doesn't make any sense.
No.
If your, if your concerns are that we're putting the town in jeopardy by not being timely, I would reach out to the town attorney and say, this is what I fear, what do you think? Right? Because that's really, and then if he says to your department, you need to do this, you're gonna say, well, I need, you gotta talk to my boss.
We will make arrangements so that, that the individual was stationed in an office to take care of it within that, and I, I'd have to say that most of the time, the minutes are available.
Our decisions usually come out with...
Seven to ten days.
Is zoning getting different than ZBA in terms of timing?
They have two meetings a month, and we've actually been going four meetings a month.
Right.
So, literally, her time is spent basically doing minute, meaning, meeting minutes.
If somebody did come in and said, where are the minutes? You could say, come back in half an hour, I'll have them for you.
Depends on the day, Jane.
They watch the video.
Twenty-four hours, absolutely not. Even if it's seven days, it's pretty close to being nine.
Well, I think...
But I would usually tell them, you know, seven to ten days, maybe fourteen.
Right.
But I'll be honest with you, I, I can tell you how many times I've been asked for the meeting minutes, and today's the first time.
My question is...
Not that they're not available, but...
If somebody came in to ask and you felt like there was some implied threat, you would just do it, you would just get it done.
If there, if it needed to be done for, for whatever purpose, yes, but an appeal can't be taken until, you know, it can be taken within fifteen days of it being posted, which in our, um, posting pattern is a week from tomorrow. And then you have, your clock of fifteen days for an appeal takes place at that point. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the minutes are done before that expires. And we have to have those done in order for that to be dictated by the stenographer to put up, put the minutes up to the court. And that's essentially, again, yes, seven days, but...
I don't think, I think, I don't think that matters. That's not the point. I think we're, we're all, I'm saying that we can...
I think it is the point, but...
Well, no, it's not that, the point is that what Joe brought into us to motion and to discuss and put in, none of us feel comfortable, we can't vote on that, is state statute.
No. And the only purpose it can, the only purpose it can possibly serve is to admonish staff, and I won't do that. I won't do that.
We're voting on whether to agree with the state statute. Though state statute is the state statute.
Yeah.
Which, I was uncomfortable believing we were meeting the requirements of the statute, and that's why I brought this. I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know how staff gets directed to do something that I not, don't believe is being, is occurring now without the board taking some sort of action. And that's, that's what this is, and it's not an admonishment, it is just, this thing was just presented on Monday night, I watched the thing, and for fifteen or twenty minutes, they talked about turnaround on, on, on access of votes and, and minutes, and there was no doubt in my mind...
Access of votes, you've done it in three, eight hours.
That, that, yeah, two days, two business days on, on votes, and seven, uh, seven calendar days on regular meeting minutes, and seven business days on special meeting minutes.
I don't think it's this force, I don't think it's this George's purview or authority to vote on how the staff and administration run the zoning department. We're here to approve or deny variances.
Applications.
And applications.